Welcome to the March 7, 2018 land use hearing. And I will call the meeting to order. And please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation undergone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we begin, oops, I already said that. At this hearing, we will consider an application by Parker, Northwest Mining, affecting property generally adjacent to the southeast corner of the intersection between Highway 99E and South Barlow Road. The application before us consists of three separate requests. A post-acknowledgement comprehensive plan amendment to Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan to designate the subject property approximately 117.55 acres as a Goal V significant mining and aggregate resource site in Chapter 3, Table 3-02 of the plan. Secondly, a zoning map amendment to apply a mineral and aggregate overlay to the subject property. And, three, provide the first two requests are approved, review of mineral and aggregate overlay district site plan, review application for the proposed mining operation. The hearing today will proceed as follows. We'll first hear from staff presentation from Senior Planner Martha Fritzi. The applicant then will be given 30 minutes to present, and we may extend that because there's a lot here. Next, I will open a hearing for public testimony, beginning with public officials who will have five minutes each. Then a representative from the recognized community planning organization and agencies will have three minutes each. Finally, other people wishing to testify will have three minutes each. The board will then deliberate and either render a decision today or set a time to make the decision at a later date. Assisting us in the hearing today is Clerk Kevin Moss, Senior Planner Martha Fritzi, and Assistant County Counsel Nate Boderman. If you wish to testify, please complete one of these green cards and give it to Kevin. If you have a prepared written statement, please give a copy to Kevin and use your time to summarize what you have written. Everyone who wishes to speak will have an opportunity to do so. We'll now begin the hearing with legal statement by Nate Boderman, followed by a staff report by Martha Fritzi.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Now is the time that we have set for the three previously identified mining-related applications. This is what we refer to as a quasi-judicial land use hearing, which means a few important things for those wishing to testify here today. First, all of the criteria that can be used in rendering a decision have been identified in the staff report. So testimony, argument, evidence must be directed towards the criteria that have been identified, or other relevant criteria that's found in the comprehensive plan or zoning ordinance. Accordingly, please direct your testimony to those relevant criteria. Second, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond may preclude appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals on that particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Once final, these decisions may be appealed to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals. And at this time, I'll ask the Board of Commissioners to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest that you may have.
Anyone?
None.
Nope.
Seeing none, if anybody wishes to challenge the impartiality of any of the decision-makers here today, please indicate your intent to do so in your testimony. And that concludes the required legal statements, and I'll turn it over to Martha Fritzi to give the staff presentation.
One moment, please. Commissioner Savas just showed, perhaps needs to answer the same question.
Fair enough. Just now that we have additional commissioner, I'll just ask once again if anybody has any bias conflicts of interest to disclose. Again, seeing none. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, good morning. I'm Martha Fritzi, a Senior Planner with the county's Planning and Zoning Division. I am going to hopefully very briefly run through the staff report and the analysis that was involved in these three files listed here. Again, the proposal in front of you is a post-acknowledgement comprehensive plan amendment to designate the subject property as a Goal V significant mineral and aggregate resource site, to then apply a mineral and aggregate overlay to the subject properties, which requires a zoning map amendment. And if those two are approved, the third file, the applicant requests approval of the site plan review application for the proposed mining operations. And the reason I say if it's approved is that the applicant can have a significant site, you can decide to apply the mineral and aggregate overlay, but then the specific analysis of what the mining operation is going to look like needs to happen before they are allowed to commence mining. And so before we start, there's two new exhibits in front of you that arrived after your packet was sent over. It's testimony from two citizens. They each are a page long. One of them is clearly in support, the other one is just a few comments. It doesn't appear to be in supportive or against, but they are in front of you because they are part of the record, if you want to take a look at them quickly. So moving on, the location of the proposed site, it's identified sort of in this map here. It's on Highway 99E and South Barlow Road. It is immediately across Highway 99E and the railroad tracks from the city of Barlow. I think that this is a really good illustration of what's around the property. The subject property itself is the orange hashed property right in the middle of this map. It's surrounded on three sides by other mining operations, and then you can see directly across the street is the city of Barlow. It's important to note that the Canby Sand and Gravel mining operation that you see to the northeast and east of this property is owned and operated by the applicants of this property. And so the proposal is for them to also mine the orange piece called the Traverso aggregate and haul, actually, this is probably a better picture in the next slide. The proposal is to mine this area that's outlined in the hash marks on the subject property. There will be no direct access off of South Barlow Road or Highway 99E to this property. It will be hauled through the existing Canby Sand and Gravel property, which is northeast of this, up through the existing entrance and exit onto Highway 99E. This sideways picture is the conceptual reclamation plan. The proposal is, once the subject properties are mined, to reclaim it into a large pond and some native plantings, some voluntary wetlands and habitat. Why is this, okay. There are a lot of relevant policies and criteria that are involved in assessing a mining application like this. We're going to focus primarily today on the administrative rule that's listed there in the middle of the page. Obviously, statewide planning goals would apply to this as well, and the county zoning and development ordinance, the sections listed here. Just a little bit of very quick background. Mineral and aggregate resources are a Goal V resource. They're protected under statewide planning Goal V, which is natural resources. And often, I mean, I think of these often as wildlife habitat and riparian corridors, but mineral and aggregate resources have been identified in the state as significant and as in need of protection, once they are found to be a significant enough resource. And so there's, as a Goal V resource, there's a specific process that's outlined under state law that you need to go through to designate an area as a significant site and therefore allow mineral and aggregate extraction. And the process is listed under that administrative rule that I had on the previous slide. Generally, very generally, you need to determine whether or not this really is a significant resource, and if it is, then you do an impact analysis to understand if you should or should not allow mining on the site based on what you find out about the impacts to nearby sensitive uses. Once that's allowed, we need to do a zone change to apply the mineral and aggregate overlay, and that overlay not only lists the uses that are allowed within that area, but also affords some protections to the mineral and aggregate resource from impacts from outside that area. This is done through a comprehensive plan amendment. The zone change goes through the public hearings process. The Planning Commission had a hearing several weeks ago, and I'll summarize that at the end of this presentation. And then, of course, today, we have a hearing in front of you to make the final decision. So very briefly, there's a prescribed process to designate a mineral and aggregate resource. The first step is that you're required to provide a whole lot of information, and a complete application needs to include things like identifying the quality, quantity, and location of the resource, having a conceptual reclamation plan, a traffic impact analysis, analyses of other proposed impacts, and a pretty specific site plan of the proposed mining uses. And so that clearly has been provided to us. It was that large binder that I gave to you a few weeks ago to take a look at. So the next step is determine if the site is significant. And the site is significant if it has a certain quantity and quality of resource in it. And in this case, the quantity standard is having over 2 million tons of aggregate material. Based on the applicant's analysis and the borings that they've done and the trenches they've dug, they're estimating approximately 60, excuse me, 6.5 million tons of material on the subject site. The material also meets the quality standard. There's specifications for base rock via ODOT, and that's done by sending it out to testing facilities, and it tested to meet the quality standard, and also locational standards that are listed in the administrative rule. And also importantly, you'll notice, if you read the summaries, that this property is agricultural land. It is considered high-value farmland. It has Class II soils. And so, and as such, the standard for designating a site as significant under this rule is a little bit higher if you are located on high-value farmland. And there is a requirement to have an average thickness of the resource of at least 25 feet. And in this case, they're estimating the average thickness of the aggregate resource is around 40 feet. And so it also meets that standard. And so both staff and the applicant have found that, based on the analyses they provided, the site does meet the standard to be deemed a significant mineral and aggregate resource. And so once you make that determination, you then determine what the potential impacts are and whether or not you should allow the mining. State law prescribes that you need to look at an impact area. In this case, it was 1,500 feet around the subject property. And you have to look at, you have to identify the potential conflicting uses within that area that are sensitive uses, and those are generally homes, schools, things like that. In this case, there is one home immediately north-north west of the property, the historic Barlow House. There is another home south of the property called the Haynes Residence. Other than that, it's primarily surrounded by other mining operations and some rural industrial development to the northeast on the sort of south side of Highway 99E. All of the uses were identified. I think there's a map in here which really illustrates it pretty well, and this is a figure from your application. I believe it's Figure 2, but I could be wrong. Within that area, you do an analysis of all the potential conflicts that could happen because of the mining operation, and you determine whether or not these conflicts can be minimized. And minimizing a conflict is defined as reducing a conflict to a level that is no longer significant or ensures conformance to state, local, and federal standards. The easiest example to give would be for noise. There's a certain standard of noise that you are allowed to produce, or a certain level of noise you're allowed to produce, and you need to ensure that the operation will not, the noise from the operation will not exceed that, or it can be minimized in some way so it won't exceed that at these conflicting uses, namely the houses. If you cannot minimize all of the conflicts, you need to do an additional analysis, an easy analysis, an environmental, social, economic, and environmental analysis. You'll notice, as we're going through this, there is no easy analysis involved. That's because it was determined through all of, ooh, what did I do? Sorry. It was determined through all of the analyses, which you can read through, and the appendices that are in the application binder, that all of the conflicts, the potential conflicts have or can be minimized off-site within the impact area. And so for a mining operation, we look at things like noise from the equipment, from rock crushers, from blasting, if there is to be blasting, which there is not on this site. You look at potential dust impacts, other discharges, groundwater, impacts to groundwater to local wells, water quality, stormwater. You specifically are required to look at impacts with other Goal V resources, and I mentioned the historic Barlow House. The portion of this property does abut the Malala River corridor, but the actual extraction area that's proposed in this case is, does not abut the Malala River corridor, and so the impacts to that were determined not to be significant, or it was determined that there'd be no conflict there. You also have to look at traffic impacts, impacts to airports if you're nearby an airport, and impacts to other agricultural operations. And so, as provided in a lot of detail, both in the Planning Commission staff report from myself, and in the application, and in all of the appendices provided in the application, all of the potential impacts that were looked at and analyzed can be mitigated so that mining can be allowed on the site without having to look at any additional analysis. And so the next step is to determine, which I already kind of kludged you in on, but is to determine whether or not to allow mining. And again, mining is allowed if all conflicts can be minimized, or if the easy consequences, the analysis warrants mining, and in this case, all the conflicts were minimized. Mining is not allowed if all conflicts can't be minimized. And so, based on the analyses here, the staff finds that mining should be allowed on the subject property, subject to the proposed mitigation and other conditions of approval that are listed in the documents that you received. So the next step, once you determine if a site is significant and if you should allow mining, is determine what the post-mining use is. You recall in the application, for the completeness review, a reclamation plan is required. The post-mining use must be consistent with county ordinances. I think most important thing to note is that reclamation is actually administered through a permit by DOGAMI. And so our analysis of the reclamation plan is really pretty limited to, is it something that's allowed? And in this case, it's natural. It's water feature and voluntary wetlands and habitat. The applicant has stated they will get all the appropriate necessary permits and approvals from DOGAMI, which also is one of the conditions of approval in this proposal. And then finally, you need to identify if there's any future conflicting uses within the mineral aggregate overlay boundary, and if those uses would need to be somehow limited or prohibited. And because the, because all the analysis determined that all the conflicts can be minimized off the subject properties, the proposal is to implement the mineral and aggregate overlay boundary only on the subject property, and there's no need to limit any uses in the surrounding properties because there won't be any conflicts. And so no new dwellings would be permitted on the subject property because that would violate, you know, certainly, there'd be noise conflicts and dust conflicts, but they wouldn't be in all likelihood allowed anyway because this property is zone-exclusive farm And so then the final step is to amend the plan. You have to amend the comprehensive plan to carry out your decision, which was the first file listed up there, Z056817. We add the Goal V site to the inventory of significant sites, which is included in your packet. It really literally is adding this to a table in Chapter 3. Then we have to amend the zoning map to apply the mineral and aggregate overlay. Doing a zone change requires that you look at Section 1202 of the zoning and development ordinance, and analysis of that section and the criteria involved, found that this proposal does indeed meet all of the necessary criteria to designate this with the mineral and aggregate overlay. And finally, your implementing measures and conditions need to be clear and objective, which we feel that they are in this case. So finally, that include, so that would include the two files, Z0568-17 and Z0570-17, the comprehensive plan amendments, and then the application of the mineral and aggregate overlay. The final step is to determine whether or not to approve the applicant's site plan, which would then lead to the actual mining commencing. And so this is regulated primarily through Section 708, the mineral aggregate overlay, which lists uses allowed in the extraction area, a number of development standards, including access noise screening, water and air quality, lists hours of operation, standards for drilling and blasting, and there's a whole number of others. It also, again, requires some sort of reclamation plan, and it identifies the process that they need to go through to get this approved. The other two sections of our zoning ordinance also apply in this case, excuse me, specifically water, sanitary, surface water, and utilities concurrency, and then signs. And I'm not really going to talk about signs because they're not proposing to put any signs here in this case, because they, the access points, the ingress and egress from Highway 99E already exists, already has signs. It's already in compliance. So just generally, the site plan review, all the proposed uses allowed under 708 are listed in there, like I said. Some may or may not occur on the site. All of the uses that they have proposed to put on the site are allowed under Section 708. They include extraction. They may or may not be processing onsite. There's an area they've identified to process on this site, or they may actually be taking it to the neighboring site to the processing facility that already exists over there. They have asked for the option to do either or both, and either or both options were included in all the analyses, and they're appropriate to approve, as far as staff would recommend. And then other things like equipment storage, small office and parking areas. All of the listed development standards have been met by their proposal, including the hours of operation, and the applicants actually proposed even more limited hours in proximity of the two adjacent dwellings in order to, primarily in order to be a good neighbor. It's not necessary to mitigate any of the impacts. There's dust and noise mitigation. The access, as I mentioned, is going through the existing site and the existing driveways. They will be building some new haul roads. They will be providing a lot of screening and berms, and some of the berms that they're providing are required under the noise mitigation conditions. Because this site is in such close proximity to two dwellings, the applicant has actually proposed to do more mitigation than was required under the noise analysis. They're providing about an eight-acre buffer around the Barlow House, including berms and plantings, and providing about a one-acre buffer around the Haynes Residence in the southwest corner of the property. Moving on, the reclamation plan and process meet all the appropriate criteria. Sewerage disposal, surface water, groundwater, and water usage criteria are all met, and there's no, what does it say? Oh, there's no new signs proposed. I already said that. So we did bring this before the Planning Commission on January 22. There were six members of the public that testified, all in favor of this application. There was no testimony in opposition. I still have not received in writing or verbally any testimony in opposition of this application. The Planning Commission, after a lot of conversation and questions, voted 8 to 0 to approve all three of the files, subject to a couple of changes that were pretty minor. Through this process, the applicant requested clarification of a few of the conditions, and staff and the applicant have worked together to work out that language, and I think we're in agreement. And the Planning Commission specifically wanted to add the word drilling to the prohibitions on Condition 7, because the applicant is not proposing any drilling or blasting, and they wanted that to be very specific, that they're not allowed to. That's really it. I mean, the proposed changes were quite minor. Staff's recommendation is approval of all three of the files listed there, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. Those are found in Section 4 of the Planning Commission staff report. And again, staff and the applicant have worked together to make any revisions that they've requested to the language to make sure it's very clear and everybody's understanding is hopefully the same on those conditions. I think that they are where everybody wants them to be. And just generally, the conditions talk about things like, that relate to the mining operations. There are conditions in there that talk about maintaining the monitoring wells and reporting and giving reports to the city of Barlow and anyone else who requests it. There are conditions that specifically talk to mitigation methods for reducing dust, for ensuring there's not any water quality impacts and things like that, the hours of operation, all of those sort of operational impacts that we've reviewed are also reiterated in there in the conditions. So that's it, and I am happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions?
Just some comments?
Sure.
First, I wanted to thank Senior Planner Fritzi for taking the time to sit down and go through some of the key points of the application. That was very helpful as far as I was concerned. And getting the material two weeks in advance was helpful. I have to say, it's got to be the understatement of the year when you said, quote, "There was lots of detail."
Sorry.
Clearly the understatement of the year. The most important issue to me was the fact that they're doing it as wet mining, which means that the groundwater table will be significantly less impacted, which I think is important to nearby wells and certainly for the city of Barlow. So really appreciated that that was the approach that the applicant has taken, and that's all I have. Thank you.
No other questions? All right, let me find out where I am. Now we'll, now we'll open up public portion, and first, the applicant will have 30 minutes. There'll also be, any public official will have five minutes. CPOs or agencies will have three minutes, and everybody else will have three minutes. Well, now, start with the applicant. And, so we have to make, you're Traverso?
I'm Nancy Traverso.
Okay. Get the cards out. And you're?
Steve Pfeifer.
Yeah, that's all. All right, go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Bernard, members of the commission. My name is Steve Pfeifer. I'm a land use attorney with the offices of Perkins Coie in Portland, Oregon, 1120. I'm a land use attorney with the offices of Perkins Coie in Portland, Oregon, 1120 Northwest Cooch, 97204. And I'm here today and have been throughout this process on behalf of the applicant along with other members of our consultant team. First of all, let me apologize for my casual attire and my appearance. I had knee surgery last week. This is my first venture out into the public hearing world again, so, which is fine, and just bear with me on that point, I guess. Martha has laid out both in the earlier briefing, I understand, and then again today, a complete and accurate picture of the unique process involving the permitting of mining applications or applications for the process, mining and processing of significant Goal Five resources in the state. That administrative rule adopted by LCDC in 96 is the one example, and really the only example, at least certainly as to Goal Five and generally in land use, where the state has stepped up back in the day and said, "We're going to take the 36 counties with their own separate and disparate and often cases regulatory schemes and consolidate them into one because of the goal, the significant resource that it is. We want to make sure that we have a balanced approach county by county throughout the state," which leads to both protection of other resources and values, including ag land and the other 11 resources in the goal, as well as providing the, frankly, the material that's important to the economic engine of the state. That preemption, if you will, resulted in the rule that Martha lays out, and this is the process you'll apply and have through to date, and the Planning Commission as well. And it's the one that every other county applies, frankly. What I'll do now is turn briefly to Nancy to summarize kind of the genesis of this submittal, the history of the company at this location, how it is operated, and why they're in need now of this additional resource. Following Nancy, we'll have two primary members of our consulting team present today to speak to the site plan, the operation, how it will occur over time, and then also the critical issue that Commissioner Humbertson raises, which is groundwater. We've done many of these over the years as a team and individually, groundwater, we have all kinds of issues on other sites throughout the state. Groundwater is the one that I can think of, along with perhaps noise mitigation, that's consistent throughout all of these applications. And with that, on a positive note, we've developed what I believe are some fairly successful and succinct mitigation measures to ensure the groundwater impacts do not occur, and if they are, and I know some members of the commission, Chair Bernard, Commissioner Savis, remember the Tonquin Quarry about three years ago where groundwater was a major issue there. And as Commissioner Humbertson points out, we've diminished the likelihood of that here by wet mining for reasons that Doug Glass will explain. So following Nancy, Dorian Cooper will come up and discuss the site plan. Following that, it'll be Doug Glass to talk about how we've addressed the groundwater issue. Other than that, we have Mike Raely and Carrie Stanley here to answer any questions you might have on noise mitigation, and Bernard Smith is here on site planning involving storm water and the like. But they're not going to speak unless questions are presented. Nancy?
You want my address?
Yes.
Good morning. I started this project of working at Camby Sand and Gravel like 44 years ago, when it was highway concrete and Alfred Malar owned it. And then Mr. Parker and my husband Bob came in to the picture on the asphalt plant. And then Bob and I got married, and I continued working for years and years for Mr. Parker and Bob. I only worked in one section, and that was doing the dispatching and data processing and dealing with all the trucks. My husband finally, when Mr. Parker passed, he moved from Abernathy Road out to Camby, so it made it real convenient for the whole family. We had our son working out there, and now I have my granddaughters helping, they're working, so it's kind of a family. I also have Mr. Parker's son, Scott Parker, has been helping me since Bob passed. It was a concrete plant and a rock crusher when I first started as a kid. And then Bob tried very, very hard for 11 months, day and night, working on this permit. And he'd been sick for about several years, but he didn't speak of it, but I knew he was failing. When he passed, it kind of got dumped into my lap, so I walked into a blind spot. But with all the support and help that I've had from family and friends and Scott Parker from Scappus, I've gotten this far with it. It should have been probably a year ago, I should have been in front of you, but we didn't, I didn't get all my facts together. Bob's been gone for close to two and a half years, and I know how important the pit was to Parker Northwest and to me, because it's been my lifestyle down there. But I didn't know that it was so complicated and so many avenues to go.
You're the only one.
It was, yeah. If it wasn't for the granddaughters and Scott helping me and my son, I would have been buried out there. But I am getting close to being without Rock. But I do know that Bob worked 11 months, day and night, on this permit. He sat on the deck with the heater on him and his pack of cigarettes and scratching his head and wondering how he's going to get rid of all the birds, and I knew he would die afterwards because that was his goal, to do this. He thought that everything would be fine, but it did take me a long time to get to this spot. I have about, I would say 25 to 30 employees, and they've been great. They're like family. But now I want to go on with it, and I want to, I just want to make Parker Northwest and Bob be proud that I've gotten this far with it, because I'm sure he didn't think I would. But that's about it. That's the life story of my life. I've been there. My child has been raised in the gravel plant, and so has the grandkids, and we're still there. And it's kind of a family.
Great, you connected some dots for me. Bob was a great supporter of the rodeo.
He was.
We were at the dedication. I was just there the other day. I had no idea you were at Camby Sand and Gravel, got a truckload of gravel and stuff. I had no idea that you were part of that, and that your daughters helped.
My granddaughters helped, yes.
Granddaughters helped me with the order.
They are.
And somebody helped me load the stuff up. It was great.
[laughing]
And Paula and I have gone through these, and they are complicated, and you're to be.
It is very complicated. There's so many moving parts to it. But I understand now the stress that Bob had gone through. He took it very hard when he lost Jack Parker, who was his mentor, and it took him a while to pick up the pieces and move on. And I understand how difficult it was for him to do this on his own. But it's, it means a lot to me to continue.
Great, well, thank you. And then you were Cooper?
Dorian Cooper's next, unless you have any questions of either of us.
No, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the, for the commissioners, the work that the state did to get us all aligned really makes this process a lot easier than it would have been. But, you know, it's still not easy at their end.
I still imagine what it would be like if you had 36 counties with 36 different sets of rules on something like this.
Yeah.
That would have been chaos.
All right.
Good morning. My name is Dorian Cooper. I'm an engineering geologist with Cooper Consulting. The address is 15115 Southwest Sequoia Parkway in Tiger, 97224. Also, I have office in Helena, Montana. I'm an engineering geologist, registered here in the state of Oregon, as well as Washington, and have been involved with, I think this is the 27th or so Goal Five in a variety of counties, so just what you mentioned is really important. It's status quo each, as far as the criteria goes, which makes it a lot easier to prepare these. Briefly, my presentation is going to be about the geology, the sand and gravel resource on the site, and that it meets the criteria, the significant Goal Five aggregate resource site. I'll talk briefly about the mining plan and reclamation plan, and then lastly, just touch on the state permitting process that Dogami has. So Goal Five, as Martha's already pointed out, there's three criteria, basically, that you have to meet, the location of where the aggregate actually is, sure, excuse me, understand the quality that of the aggregate that will meet ODOT base rock standards, as well as there has to be at least a minimum of 2 million tons of resource on the property. So, oh, I didn't bring my pointer. Well, Camby is up, as you can see, this aerial shows Camby up to the north or the northeast part of the, east of the property, and Highway 99, and I'm sure you're familiar of where obviously the site is located, and it's pretty much surrounded by existing mining. Just to the north there is the Camby Sand and Gravel, and then you'll see across the river to the east is mining that Camby Sand and Gravel also did, which is now Big Lake, basically. And then on the south and west side of the property are other mining sites. And that's what, same picture that Martha pointed out, and I didn't know she was going to use that, so I was just going to point out the same fact, that it's pretty much surrounded by mining. So, the geology on the site, we had a field program where we excavated 10 trenches across the site, as well as drilled three boreings where monitoring wells were put in, and Doug Glass will be speaking about those. The sand and gravel is anywhere from 40 to 60 feet across the site. And we took representative samples to an independent lab, which tested the sand and gravel, and it does meet and exceed ODOT specifications for base rock. And lastly, we calculate about, very conservatively, six and a half million tons of sand and gravel on the site, which in a way exceeds the 2 million tons. And that was based on about 40 feet thickness, so we know there's more out there, but we want to be conservative. So therefore, it's a very significant resource site. This is just a photo that shows the property. It's pretty flat. That was the excavator we used for doing actual trenches. That's a picture of as we were starting to do the trenches. We were going 25-ish, 30 feet sometimes, as deep as we could with that excavator. There's a little bit of soil on top, and then it gets into a weathered rock, and you can see that sand and gravel there. Water table varies. It's usually 15 to 20 feet at depth, depending on the time of year and how rainy we've been lately, but again, Doug Glass will discuss that more. In addition, we had a variety of technical studies for the property. Besides engineering and groundwater geology, we have a civil engineer reviewing or studying, I should say, the stormwater design and erosion protection. We had a wetland study done, and there are no wetlands on the property. Noise and traffic studies were also completed in accordance with Goal Five requirements. So with the mining plan, it was designed to meet county and Dogami and other agency requirements. And in fact, Dogami is currently reviewing the mining plans. We met with them about two weeks ago at the site, and they're in the current review as well. The geology and technical studies, all these studies come together to design the mining plan. And as we've mentioned, there will be no dewatering, it will be mining what we call the wet, and it will be mined in three phases, and I'll show a photo of that in a moment. As Martha mentioned, the processing of the actual aggregate will, we looked at both off-site on the current Camby Sand and Gravel site or onsite in the southeast corner of the property. I think I have, okay. So as Martha pointed out, this is the site. On the north side is Camby Sand and Gravel, and you can see to the, on the very right side of the, of the photo, is what we call the haul road, which comes down from Camby Sand and Gravel down to that little southeast corner of the property. And that's where also processing may take place, or else they'll just dig the aggregate and then haul it back up to Camby Sand and Gravel to process. The site will be excavated in that first cell, which is on that far right side, basically. Any overburden or topsoil material, weathered rock will be taken off, not off the problem, but excavated, and then they will, that's what these berm's will be built of, that will surround the property over time for both visual, as well as in some areas where we need acoustical protection. And so they'll mine out that first cell down 40 feet or so, so it'll be a bit dry and then into the wet, and then they'll start moving to the west towards Barlow Road on that second lower cell, mine out most of the dry material. It's like a layer cake, basically, mine out the dry material, and then they'll move to the north of that final cell, also removing the dry material. And as they're doing that, what material that they don't actually use for aggregate, the weather material, they'll continue to build berm's and/or also concurrently reclaim that first cell. So it's kind of a concurring, you're mining one area, when you're done with certain areas, you're reclaiming it. And then finally, they'll come back and finish mining cell, the second cell and the third cell, oops, sorry, in the water to the depth, anywhere from, like I say, 40 to 60 feet. So that's the general details and plan for the mining. And then when, where possible, I mentioned concurrent reclamation for, for the site. It's going to be roughly 72 acre water feature. There may be some wetlands, extensive seeding with native grasses and shrubs and trees, which goes a lot further beyond Dogami's requirement. This is what Bob Traverso really wanted. He has some wonderful sketches to show, and this is one of them, what he thinks it will look like, what wants to look like, and what Dogami is looking at to happen as well, in that you can see the former mining area is now basically a big lake with a lot of trees and, and just, just kind of almost a park-like feeling. That's what Bob, that was his dream. That's what he really wanted. And this is just a little cross-section to show if you, on the upper right part, that was the current land, the flat land out there. Then they cut down, as they're mining, they're cutting down a slope to the water, and the water would be at the very far left, and it goes a lot deeper. But the point is, is from a reclamation standpoint, this is what Bob visualized. Down near the water, you have a riparian area, and he specified specific vegetation, and as you move up the so-called hill, well, it's not really hill, but the slope, there's a variety of different types of trees, and this has all been turned in as well to Dogami, who are quite pleased, and we've had a lot of positive reaction from them. So lastly, speaking of Dogami, they do regulate mining here in the state, and they're reviewing the permit now. Once land use is completed, they will circulate their, the permit to a variety of local and state, federal natural resource agencies for comments. Those comments then will come back to Dogami after a certain timeframe, and Dogami will assess them and may put additional conditions on the permit. We just wait and see. And finally, they'll assess a certain reclamation bond, which the applicant, or I should say the operator, will give to Dogami, and then at that point, Dogami would issue the permit for mining. So in conclusion, the site meets the criteria to be a significant Goal Five resource site with regard to location, quality, and quantity, and therefore should be added to the county inventory of mineral resources. And we believe we've designed a responsible mine plan and certainly extensive reclamation plan that Bob Traverso envisioned. So without, if there's any questions, be happy to answer them.
What's the timeframe to mine this piece of property?
You know, it, that's a good question. It depends on the economy. If things are going busy, there's more demand for aggregate. We've seen this highs and lows over the years, and if it was going pretty darn good, I would think, and I'm, well, I'm guessing on this, 15, 20 years, roughly?
That's what I thought.
Is that kind of, at least maybe a little bit more?
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, any other questions?
I just got to say, I'm really jealous of water at 15 feet. When we had our ranch, we had to drill 450 feet and didn't hit water until about 200 and something.
Oh, yeah.
So, 15 feet?
Yeah, we appreciate.
I'd have killed for that.
[laughing] Well, our place in Helena, we're pretty deep too, and we appreciate water at five gallons a minute, so it's tough.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next, Glass?
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Doug Glass. Thank you for hearing me today. I'm with HG Schlickern Associates, Inc. I'm the principal engineering geologist and the president there. We're located at 607 Main Street, Suite 200, Oregon City, Oregon, 97045. I'm here today to speak about groundwater at the site. And I believe I'm pressing this thing right. One right, thank you, Dorian. So my brief discussion here today will involve a couple of work that we did, a brief description of the site, the geology, the surface water, the groundwater, a few conclusions, and some recommendations. The photo you see there is us. So, my brief discussion here today will involve the scope of work that we did, a brief description of the site, the geology, the surface water, the groundwater, a few conclusions, and some recommendations. The photo you see there is us drilling one of the monitoring wells out at the site. Sure about that, Dorian?
Yeah.
There we go. So, again, this is the second time you've seen the site, or third time you've seen the site here, but on this one, you'll see the city of Barlow well pointed out across the highway, just to the north. You'll see that it is relatively close to the site. It's about nine hundred feet from the proposed mine activity. Site's about a hundred and seventeen acres, and it's generally flat. Geology in the area is mapped as Quaternary alluvium, unconsolidated sand, gravel, and cobbles, interbedded with silt and clay. It's underlined by Placing Troutdale Formation, indurated beds and lenses of well-sorted sandstone conglomerate with silt stone and clay stone interbeds. Subsurface conditions evaluated by reviewing boring logs of nearby wells, monitoring wells which we installed at the, and near the site, and exploratory boreings. There were also exploratory trenches by Cooper Consulting, which she has gone over, and we did three exploratory boreings at the site from July thirty-first to August second of two thousand and seventeen, which were completed as monitor wells. The three exploratory boreings at the site generally encountered organic topsoil from the surface to approximately three feet, brown clay silt from about three feet to seven feet, interbedded sand and gravel with silty matrix from about seven feet to forty-four feet, and generally silty clay sands below approximately forty-four feet, with the exception of Boring B-one, where we were still in a good minable material down to about sixty This photo you're seeing here, this figure, shows the three monitoring wells. The one in the upper is B-one, that is in the buffer zone and will remain for all time throughout the mining life of the mine. Boreings B-two and B-three, which were also completed as monitoring wells, are in the mine cells, and they will eventually be mined out. As Dorian pointed out, the mining will start at the south end and work towards the north in basically two paths, or twice around, so to speak. Here's a cross-section showing the actual geology at the site over A at A'. A is the area closest to city of Barlow, and A' is the area closest to the mines that have been mined in the past. So you can see that the, the gravelly material, that quarryed dash line at the bottom there, that kind of separates the mine resource from materials below it, which would not be minable because they're too fine-grained. And you can see that in Boring B-one, down at sixty-eight feet or so, we were still in some good sand and gravel, and below that, though, we were out of it. These monitoring wells were completed, the two to the, the south were completed to about a depth of sixty feet, and the others seventy feet. So, surface water, we have the Malala River located approximately eight hundred feet to the east, the Pudding River located approximately one mile to the west, and these two rivers intersect approximately two and a half miles north and flow into the Willamette River, about three and a half miles north of that. Monitoring wells installed in B-one, B-two, and B-three, and the groundwater elevation measurements are ongoing in the monitoring wells. B-one, we, ground elevation was one, about one oh-five, and the groundwater elevations were in eighty-three, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three foot, so you're, you're looking at around twenty feet. B-two, where you're moving to the south and to higher elevations there, you still have about the same depth to groundwater. You're generally looking at about twenty feet at the dry part of the year, meaning in the summer, beginning of fall, and based on other work we've done in the area, it looks like there's about fifteen feet, sometimes as, as little as ten feet down to groundwater. Hydraulic conductivity, which is the, how fast water can flow through these materials, was measured. We had well interference issues on B-one, but on B-two and B-three, we had gallons per K, it's, it's expressed in K, which is gallons per day per square foot over one unit of head, so in other words, the pressure is one foot of water of head. We had K-values of thirty and six. Those are extremely high values. I'm sure at my well, on my property in, over near West Lynn, my well would probably be down at point oh-oh-oh something. And I can certainly relate to you, Ken, because my well was once three hundred feet deep and had to be deepened over five hundred, and it's still a lousy well. It's tough. It is tough when, when you cannot take a shower, have the washing machine on, and water your garden at the same time. So, conclusions of proposed progression, that is south to north, and the method that is wet mining, we're not going to be doing any dry mining out there. We could have made dry mining work, but the applicant chose to do wet mining. Resource stretch will, it'll prevent turbidity issues and impacts to groundwater levels and neighboring wells, and I like to point out that you often hear about this turbidity issue at mine sites, and there's never been a mine site in the Willamette Valley where there has been an off-site turbidity issue as a result of mining. No wells have ever been impacted. Been a couple times when people thought that's what it was, but basically what they had was iron bacteria in their well. Groundwater levels in the three monitoring wells should be monitored for the life of the mine or until they're mined out. Monitor well B-one lies outside the mine cells. Water quality testing for heavier and lighter hydrocarbons, DX and GX, and polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons should be monitored for the life of the mine, and the frequency on that will be dependent upon the findings. If, if there's anything that indicates that, hey, we're running into something that's, that there's any kind of contamination, then absolutely, we'd get out there and monitor more frequently, or if there'd been a spill of some sort, we'd certainly want to step up monitoring. We recommend that Parker Northwest Paving Company should mine the Traverso site from the southeast to the southwest to north, utilizing the three mine cells as indicated in the application. They shall use an excavator and wet extraction for removal of the gravel, which leaves the water in the groundwater system. They shall monitor groundwater levels continuously in B-one and quarterly in B-two and B-three as necessary until all mining operations are completed. So that means that in B-one, we'll actually have equipment in there that is a continuous recorder, and B-two and B-three will just go out and sample periodically and measure water levels. Quarterly water quality testing of monitoring wells, B-one, B-two, and B-three, will be initially conducted for heavier and lighter hydrocarbons and polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons to establish background levels, if any. Parker Northwest shall share its monitoring data with the city of Barlow and any other interested regulatory agency, for example, Dogami and Water Resources, during initial two years of operation and thereafter upon request. Very important that there be communication and that there be follow-up on this site. You know, mine sites are important, and people's wells adjacent to them are very important. As mining progresses, Parker Northwest Paving shall continually monitor groundwater levels related to its operation until terminated. If a trend is observed that could significantly affect the city of Barlow, well, Parker Northwest Paving Company shall work with the city of Barlow and regulatory agencies to modify its mining plans to eliminate the problem. Our understanding is that an existing condition of approval for the Parker Northwest Canby operation is that Parker Northwest shall replace or restore any well that is demonstrated to be significantly affected by its operations to its historical level of production. This condition should be continued for the Traverso aggregate expansion property site. A spill prevention, control, and countermeasure plan should be in place for operations at the mine site. Very important. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those now. I'd like to point out that HG Schlicker and I myself personally have been working in this site for over, or in this area, immediate area of Barlow for more than thirty years. We've been involved in every mine out there. We've met with the city of Barlow at their December meeting and took all their questions, explained what was going on. They didn't express any concerns at the time, but they were noncommittal because they wanted to hear the rest of the information that would be presented at the planning commission. We, they still seem to be fine with it. Groundwater levels will be maintained by the wet mining. Just like to really point that out, because I know that's been a concern, but I'd also like to point out that we could have made this mine work with dry mining. There'll be a spill prevention and control plan. That is critical. It's imperative that if anything were to ever happen out there, that we already have a method and a system in place to address it, and that we respond quickly. So, with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
One. Ken?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Your continuous monitoring well is in cell B-one.
Yes.
I'm curious, just a question of curiosity, why it wouldn't be in or near cell three, which would be closer to Barlow?
Actually, B-one is the closest to Barlow.
It is?
Yeah.
It's the one, I was looking at the map, it, it looked like it was the furthest.
Yeah, it's, it's the one up next to the site.
I'll need to see the map again, then.
Yes.
Because I thought it was the, when I was looking at it, I thought it was on the far-right corner away from Barlow.
We can bring it up on the screen.
There we go. You see up there by A?
Right, close to that.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so that one.
All right.
It'll, it'll.
I thought it was down on the right corner.
Yeah, understood. Lot of information up there. Yeah, so it'll stay and, and it won't be affected, because that line that you're seeing, that dash line going there, that is the buffer. So that whole little peninsula up there will not be touched. And the reason for that is that, one, it's close to wells that we're concerned about, and, two, it'd be tough to actually mine to any depth and get any material out of there with the corners you have to turn.
That's, well, I was looking at the other picture that shows the cells, and the first cell was at the bottom right.
That, which would be in about the area of B-three there.
So the numbers don't correlate. The B-one is up at the top, cell one is down.
The cells are different than, there you go.
Now I got it. I was trying to figure out why it wasn't closest to Barlow, because that obviously would be the community you'd want to be the most cautious with.
Believe me, I understand the confusion.
Thank you.
It's interesting, you know, if you think of the French Prairie, where the topsoil's a hundred feet deep.
They hit a tree drilling a well in that area at three hundred and forty-eight feet.
This is three feet deep.
Yeah.
The good soil.
Yeah.
So, that's a, says a lot. All right, any other questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So that's applicants, and we're moving on to the citizens, and you all have three minutes, so give us your name and address. And we have Keith Dunn and Mike Riley, it looks like.
That's me. I'm the executive consultant, so just if you had questions about noise.
Okay. And Keith?
Yeah.
Please come forward, and Scott Parker.
The cells and the wells didn't coordinate.
Yeah, my name is Keith Dunn, and I live at two-seven-four-five-oh South Barlow Road. And believe it or not, I go back farther than Nancy. I was there before Nancy. And my concern is, no concern, it's just that I was very fortunate to be a young man that got the opportunity to work at a rock crusher, because education was not one of my priorities. And I've worked hard, and the sand and gravel agreements have been real lucrative and treated me well, and Canby Sand and Gravel is a union operation, which is very important, and I think there's a good possibility the concrete in this building could have come from that operation, at least the sand and gravel, you know, and so there, I just want to say, I, I think it's real important that young men like me get the opportunity to work in something other than education, because not everybody is educated, you know? That's not their goal. And I, it's been very, very lucrative to me, and I've done well, and I retired out of the union, and I, I think it's important that it goes on as a union operation, and it's been good, and I would like to see other young men get the opportunity.
That's a plus. That's a plus.
Thank you. Mr. Parker.
I like the young part. My name is Scott Parker, three-six-three-five-two, Meloris Way in Columbia City, Oregon. My father and Bob Traverso were partners in more than one aggregate business, and they acquired from Al Millar this business back in the sixties, I believe, early seventies. I own three aggregate businesses myself. I have my grandkids working with me, and if you Google Parker or Traverso, I think you're going to find rock under those names in the, on the internet. My family and the Traverso family have been in the industry in Clackamas County for umpteen years. Many of the streets in this city were built by my grandfather. And, you know, the aggregate business is more difficult to cite, you can tell from this application, than ever, and it's not getting easier by any means. The pit that Dad and, and Bob had going in Canby is virtually out of aggregate. This expansion will guarantee a further life, more jobs for the union guys and the grandkids, and providing a resource that Clackamas County dearly needs. That's really all I have, but thank you for listening.
Great. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Well, we'll close the public portion of this hearing, and just any discussion, deliberation?
I'm good to go.
So, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve Z zero-five-six-eight-dash-one-seven-dash-CP, Z zero-five-six-nine-dash-one-seven-dash-MA-0, and Z zero-five-seven-zero-dash-one-seven-dash-Z as recommended by the planning commission and staff.
Second.
Any further discussion? Well, this is, I think, my third hearing on mining. This is probably the easiest one. And, you know, I, I always look back to all that work that the state went through to organize the counties, and I thought that work was very helpful. It makes these a lot easier to do, and I appreciate that. And it's moved in second to approve Z zero-five-six-eight-dash-one-seven-dash-CP, Z zero-five-six-nine-dash-one-seven-MAO, and Z zero-five-seven-oh-dash-one-seven-Z as recommended by the planning commission and staff. Any further discussion?
Yes, Paul?
Yeah, I just want to just echo what Commissioner Bernard just said. This, compared to previous aggregate mine, mining operations, this is the easiest done, and I think the work has been done, has been well put together, and the water runoff, as Mr. Pfeiffer stated, is really not an issue here whatsoever. So, it's nice to see, as much paperwork as this is, that it's actually a very easy decision. So, thanks for all the good work, and look forward to seeing some roads built.
Paul, if there's no further discussion, we'll ask the clerk to take a roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Humberson.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Sheriff Bernard.
Aye. Motion is approved. Now we will request that staff, we direct staff to draft an ordinance reflecting today's decision, include it on an agenda at a future board meeting, and with that, we'll close the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome.